All right, calls me to order. Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And as to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mrs. Moore, here. Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Bitner?
Here.
Mr. Shaboo?
Here.
Mr. Lunder?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here. Approval of minutes from the regular meeting of council September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three. Are there any additions or corrections in the minutes? Motion to approve as written.
Seconded.
Motion made by Mr. Morris, seconded by Mr. Shaboo for approval. Roll call please.
Mrs. Moore, aye. Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye. Correspondence. Clerk, is there any correspondence this evening?
Yes, I have correspondence tonight. Okay, the first one is to all members of council. After giving this a lot of thought, I am hereby resigning as clerk of council effective December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. It has been a pleasure working with council and the administration these last ten years, and prior to that as substitute clerk of council. Sincerely, George Sax. A letter from Diane Feinrich, Feinrich, seven-seven-two-three, Salida Road. Dear City of Menorah Lake Administration and Government Members, I received a letter within the past ten days that was dated January regarding my railroad ties that have been there since two thousand and eight without any complaints or issues. I have specific reasons for having the railroad ties in place and not just a few rocks as a barrier between the street and my house. The corner of my house sits less than ten feet on the corner of Chagrin Drive where cars turn from Salida eastbound to Chagrin Drive northbound. This minimal distance is already a safety concern of mine. The railroad ties are less than ten feet from my house. I have received numerous letters from the City of Menorah Lake. It's evident that I am being targeted due to my disagreements with Mayor Dave Viva on his handling or lack of handling of the Aqua Ohio situation with the roadhouse on the side of the Aqua Ohio Water Plant and many other issues. My neighbors, the Nails, previously leased the house, seven-seven-two-three Salida, that I purchased, forcing them to close the Menorah Lake Beverage Store. The Nails are still quite angry. The Nails also insisted on continued trespassing on my property for use as their driveway. This anger is what is behind the numerous complaints that they call and complain to Mayor Dave Viva about me. I was told that the railroad ties were fine where they are since two thousand and eight. Also, I have attached pictures of other properties in my neighborhood to cite as examples of me being targeted. Justice is not equal in Menorah Lake. Anger the mayor and have anger hateful neighbors, and I am and have been a target for revenge for many years. I have specifically asked Mayor Dave Viva to not call me when any of the nails call him with the complaint. The nails and Mayor Eva Day and Mayor Dave Viva are ganging up on me and have gained up on me with the sole purpose of harassment and vengeance. I am humbling asking, please administer justice equally and cease the harassment from the nails towards me. As a taxpayer, I am demanding an end to the wasteful spending of our city resources for personal reasons of anger and vengeance. We have a third email from Bill Cleveland with attachments. Dear City Council Members, the attached letter is from Mike Huffman as a result of an informal meeting Mr. Chris Schick and I requested to get some guidance from the area expert on the process and cost of repair to the embankment at our plant. Hopefully, this information will be useful to you. That's the correspondence I have tonight.
Good. Is there any other correspondence this evening? There are none. We'll move on to administrative department head reports. Mayor and safety director, Mr. Eba, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Johnson, members of council, Republicans this evening. I would ask council to suspend the rules for resolution twenty-twenty-three dash R dash twenty-three. Uh, this is going to our city engineer in order for him to submit an application on our behalf for the Salida Road storm sweeper project. So this is time sent. The fire department's monthly report for September. There were a total of hundred and thirty-four calls for service, one fire service calls, one hundred and fourteen rescue EMS calls. Of those hundred and fourteen calls, there were twenty-seven calls for invalid assist, three calls for an overdose requiring Narcan. Department training for September, EMS drills presented by U H Lake Health, the topic was pediatrics. Department shift drills for the month of September, EMS was basically airway mastery. Fire training was coordination of suppression and ventilation in single-family homes. Uh, department activity, ale house and AFC, uh, they conducted suppression testing there. Uh, year to date through the three quarters of twenty-twenty-three, there were a total of one thousand one hundred fifty-two calls for service. This is an increase of a hundred eighty-four calls from this time last year. There were two hundred and twelve fire service calls, nine hundred and forty rescue EMS calls. Of those nine hundred and forty calls, a hundred ninety-one calls for invalid assist and nine calls for an overdose requiring Narcan. That concludes my report tonight.
Good. Thank you. Administrative director, Mr. Ness, good evening.
Good evening. Um, I don't know if you noticed, we have a new curtain installed. Looks pretty good. Came in one day because of both friends. Uh, we had two interns start this week. One, uh, waiter people last week, one started for, uh, in zoning office for website, various topics. Declaration of duty decided, uh, we're planning on bringing another one, but Chris, um, is her at home, so she will take too bad to bring another one in while she's out, so we have, who is there to start it? Um, least you didn't, at least do need negotiations that recently started, so working on that. And, uh, budget preparation will begin soon and we're kind of going forward to see. Okay, go ahead.
Good. Thank you. Law director, Mr. Lyons, good evening.
Good evening, uh. I have to wade into the tree lawn issue. I know that we have an ordinance, two ordinances that relate to trees and tree lawns. And, uh, also what can replace them in the tree lawn. So when that, if, uh, what you can have on the tree lawn, if that passes, that may or may not affect the situation that was raised. Again, that letter, but, uh, I, I'm not sure of what the general understanding is in the community about our tree lawns. The tree lawns that we have are part of the road right of way that's either owned by the city or controlled by the state. So, uh, many people, you know, when you have sidewalks, it's easy to see a tree lawn. If you don't have sidewalk, but instead when you have digits, that doesn't mean that the roadway or the roadway easement doesn't extend past the actual physical pavement of the road. Uh, so what is placed, you know, legally in that tree lawn area or street lawn area is something that's under the control of the city. And, uh, you know, in terms of the specifics of the letter that was sent to the person who wrote in, I'm not sure what the specifics are towards the per situation. Uh, but, uh, it's been a topic that has been talked about at council uh, and also in people coming to meetings and in the community in terms of what can be allowed or what isn't allowed. I don't recall in this new legislation that people are allowed to have railroad ties in the right of way. It may be in there, but I don't recall that being, you know, something that was listed. So, uh, I, I know the writer, I, I don't know, but I know that the writer said that she was told by somebody in two thousand and eight that she could have, uh, railroad ties in the right of way, and I don't know who that was, but I'm not that person had, you know, the legal right to tell that her or anyone else in terms of what can be located. Uh, as a stand, you know, the regulation of the tree lawn area is an administrative function that is seen by the legislation as bad function. I just wanted to say all those words, uh, so that the people have a better idea of the area adjacent to the street that they're talking about. And safety, you know, is a big, uh, matter, you know, I think many people will remember when Jim Sale, uh, our engineer from C T Consultants, he would sit there and Jim Sale cited ODOT regulations in terms of a clear zone, okay, in the road right of way, and I think that that was looked at or considered by council, okay, in terms of trying to develop these new regulations and, uh, I know that they've been pending for some period of time, but I'm, I'm sure in the appropriate time council will uh, take action and the administration will do their best to, uh, you know, try to implement, you know, the rules that council passed.
That's my report rather than my usual known report. Thank you. Is there any questions for the administration?
Yes, Mr. Bider. Uh, Mr. Ness, would it be possible to hold off on any other letters sent to Ms. Feinrich at this time until we, I mean, as you know, ordinance number twenty-twenty-three four-dash-oh-seven, we're on third reading, we're trying to finish it up, would it direct this issue?
I actually spoke with her this morning.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. Can I ask your question?
Okay.
Um, regarding railroad ties, yes. Other issues?
If you'd like, sure, but I don't know what the other issues are.
I mean, actually, please, and various.
Okay.
So this one, absolutely, I spoke to her this morning, you told her, um, based on what the new ordinance will likely be, but she will then be in compliance as no longer an issue.
Thank you. Just, just add, this, this has been an ongoing conversation for the last ten years between us two. And at one point, you know, we, we sent letters and then, uh, she had asked Cory Flowers, our inspector, to just call her directly. And it, it's, it's been, there's been conversations all summer just to get the lawn cut once over there all summer. Uh, there, there was poison ivy coming over the fence. There were weeds and everything, uh, that she had been sent letters about. We've had conversations and I've never had a bad conversation with her. But every conversation has been, it'll be done this Friday. It'll be done this Friday. And nothing's ever been done until we reached the point that, you know, you had your group meeting with her and even after the group meeting, there was nothing done there. And Mr. Ness went out again. We, we sent chief foresight out there. There's no. And it, it, it's a situation where I've tried, we've tried to, you know, maintain decency between the two of them, but neither one of them really wants to cooperate at all.
So with the, with the railroad ties, uh, Ms. Morris was there, Ms. Lunder was there. I mean, just a good show up too, Ms. Cool was there. She said to me that she would have the railroad ties to the border. Without questions, that raised my patience. And then, and then clearly there's not a lot of need to remove them, so. It, it's an ongoing issue, but it was supposed to revolve, but you couldn't do it now, which did not work. And furthermore, I'm concerned that if she refuses to remove that issue, it'll not be a client, which she likely will be soon, but if she wasn't, what is our, our recourse from there? We basically just call it on the block. We gotta take the court, if you write the letters, or, you know, it's just over railroad ties. Little, it's little monster, we're not gonna force it residence city, I understand. That's, that reminds me, I wanna kill. Uh, over the issue of the ball this morning.
Any other questions for the administration? There are none. We'll move on to board committee commission reports. Parks director did not meet, uh, utility committee.
Uh, utility committee met on, uh, October third. Meeting started at six o'clock. We went over the garbage contract, uh, applying version of it. Myself, the extra Blue, Kevin Bitner, Johnson, Michelle Moore, Elizabeth Thompson, with the president, also Brent Moore. Uh, we went over a final review of the contract and found a couple of words, a couple typos. Uh, we corrected those and we sent this to Jerry Ness, going to put out for bid, uh, by inserting the dates for the newspaper and when the contracts, contractors, uh, are to return the bids will, uh, ended at six fifteen.
Okay, were there any other board committees or commissions in that? There are none. We'll move on to open the public to speak. You'd like to speak, please come to the lecture and state your name and address for the record. Again, this is not a back and forth with council. This is an opportunity to speak to council and have your concerns, uh, put into the public record.
Jim, how do you say I live on Ivy Drive, five-six-one-nine Ivy Drive, corner of Glen and Ivy. Uh, the garden trucks have been coming around the corner there and they keep cutting shorter into my yard. And as they're getting closer and closer to the fire hydrants, the compression of the ground, the fire hydrant starts to leak. I don't know if anything could be done there, a curb or whatever to keep people from dragging there. Several years ago, the asphalt had growed a little more at the corner to, uh, prevent the mosquito beds from the mud, and, uh, they just keep encouraging more and more in my yard, I've been cornered. That's the southwest corner, southeast corner, well, Glen and Ivy. So, you know, it, it's an issue, and if it keeps going, the fire hydrant especially is gonna get real, or so he's gonna hit us. I've got, I was thinking railway ties, but now it's like, it's only that now. I, I think we need to do something before the fire hydrant gets taken out.
We'll, we'll take one, yeah.
That's all I've got.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Don't believe my slide alone. Just one thing that I'd like to mention. Uh, apparently, planning zoning has passed a modification of some sort to the tax payment structure. And if approved by council, it would eliminate tax payment for new construction of residences. And I would like to say that I fully support that change. Uh, I will mention that at one time Mayor Ava, when he was talking about the potential benefits of this condo development, he mentioned that it would bring in additional revenues, and I think the number there is somewhere around fifty-two thousand dollars. I don't remember exactly, but it was a nice piece of cake. And that was one of the justifications for possibly allowing identity housing, even though the majority of the citizens, a lot of people are a lot and most likely may have to go there. So the question is, that's one of the potential justification for even allowing that. It was the venture revenue coming in. Why wouldn't we want to get tax abatement and not get that revenue? It just makes no sense to me at all that we would even consider any tax abatement at all for something that the voting public does not want. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? There are none, I will close this portion, open the public to speak. We'll move on to legislative for council. Resolution number twenty-two-three dash R dash twenty-three, if you please read it by its title.
Resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash R dash twenty-three. A resolution authorizing the administrative director and city engineer to prepare and submit applications on behalf of the city for OPWC round thirty-eight funding and authorizing the mayor and administrative director to execute such forms and contracts as may be required to properly secure OPWC round thirty-eight funding on behalf of the City of Menorah Lake, Lake County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Are there any questions on this? Yes.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Morris to suspend the rules, seconded by Mrs. Thompson. Mrs. Moore has a question.
I do have a question. The OPWC round thirty-eight funding, is that the, the grant for the Southland Road project?
Yes, yes, the grant is, uh, the project's approximately a million and grants three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Any other questions before we move on to roll call? All right, roll call on the suspension, please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye. Any other discussion on this before we move on? Motion made by Mr. Morris for passage, seconded by Mr. Shaboo. Roll call please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye. Yeah, the next series of resolutions are regarding the charter review commission appointments. Everyone should have received down the line here, um, two of the members who have not been previously appointed to boards or commissions for our council rules, uh, they're requested be on a commission. Um, and everyone should have a copy of the third person's.
They've gone to me to down.
Yeah, you should have a copy of Jim Hawes already at your desk.
Oh, okay. Yeah, thank you.
And that is the first one. Okay, every other member on here has already been appointed to a board of commissioners, so if you don't already know who they are and already have full information on them, shame on you. All right, resolution number twenty-two-three dash R dash twenty-four, if you please read it by its title.
Resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash R dash twenty-four. A resolution confirming the appointment of Jim Hawes to the twenty-twenty-four Charter Review Commission and declaring an emergency.
There are any discussion?
How many members are you looking for on this?
Nine, nine, this, this should be all of them. We, we actually had probably another one of ten, but we, there.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion to suspend.
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Morris for suspension of the rules. Roll call please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye. Passage. Motion made by Mr. Morris, seconded by Mr. Shaboo for passage, roll call please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye. Resolution number twenty-two-three dash R dash twenty-five, if you please read it by its title.
Resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash R dash twenty-five. A resolution confirming the appointment of Scott M. Wilhelm to the twenty-twenty-four Charter Review Commission and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend.
Seconded. Motion made by Mrs. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Morris for suspension, roll call please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye. Motion made by Mr. Morris. Seconded by, seconded by Mr. Shaboo for passage, roll call please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye. Resolution number twenty-two-three dash R dash twenty-six, if you please read it by its title.
Resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash R dash twenty-six. A resolution confirming the appointment of Jeanette Pachasco to the twenty-twenty-four Charter Review Commission and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend.
Seconded. Motion made by Mrs. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Morris for suspension of the rules. Roll call please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson? Mr. Johnson?
I am not transitioning, but thank you.
Aye. Geez, Rob. Okay, is there any more?
Motion.
True. Seconded. Made by Mrs. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Morris.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye. Your resignation is not accepted. Resolution number twenty-three-two, twenty-two-three dash R dash twenty-seven, if you please read it by its title.
Resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash R dash twenty-seven. A resolution confirming the appointment of Earl Curris to the twenty-twenty-four Charter Review Commission and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Morris, seconded by Mrs. Thompson for suspension. Roll call please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye. Motion for passage.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Morris, seconded by Mrs. Thompson for passage, roll call please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye. Resolution number twenty-two-three dash R dash twenty-eight, if you please read it by its title.
Resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash R dash twenty-eight. A resolution confirming the appointment of Suzanne M. Kason to the twenty-twenty-four Charter Review Commission and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend.
Seconded. Motion made by Mr. Shaboo, seconded by Mr. Morris for suspension of the rules. Roll call please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye. Motion for passage. Seconded. Motion made by Mr. Morris, seconded by Mr. Shaboo for passage, roll call please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder? Mr. Johnson?
Aye. Resolution number twenty-two-three dash R dash twenty-nine, if you please read it by its title.
Resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash R dash twenty-nine. A resolution confirming the appointment of Brean Ho to the twenty-twenty-four Charter Review Commission and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend.
Okay, made by Mrs. Thompson, seconded by- Read by Mrs. Thompson, second by Mr. Shaboo, roll call please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
For passage.
Second, motion made by Mrs. Thompson, second by Mr. Shaboo for passage, roll call please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty twenty three dash R dash thirty, please read it by its title.
Resolution number twenty twenty three dash R dash thirty. A resolution confirming the appointment of Ralph Boomer to the twenty twenty four charter review commission and declaring an emergency.
I'll second it then. Wow, everybody at once here. Who got it first there? I don't know. Mr. Lunder, second by Mr. Morris. Roll call please for suspension.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Motion for passage. Second.
Made by Mr. Morris, seconded by Mr. Lunder, roll call please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye, who's popular around here, wow.
Resolution number twenty twenty three dash R dash thirty one, if you please read it by its title.
Resolution number twenty twenty three dash R dash thirty one. A resolution confirming the appointment of Brent Moore to the twenty twenty four charter review commission and declaring an emergency.
Motion made by Mr. Lunder, second by Mr. Shaboo for suspension of the rules, roll call please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Motion for passage. Motion made by Mr. Morris, second by Mr. Shaboo for passage, roll call please.
Mrs. Moore?
I've seen.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty three, twenty twenty three dash R dash thirty two, if you please read it by its title.
Resolution number twenty twenty three dash R dash thirty two. A resolution confirming the appointment of Mike Sweeney to the twenty twenty four charter review commission and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension.
Second, motion made by Mr. Lunder, second by Mr. Shaboo for suspension, roll call please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Motion for passage.
Second, made by Mr. Lunder, second by Mr. Shaboo for passage, roll call please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, that concludes the charter review commission grouping there and uh like to thank every volunteer who is going to be serving on our charter review year review commission. Ordinance number twenty twenty three dash O dash zero seven, that is still assigned to the council the whole until we wrap up the other ordinance that's related to this. Ordinance number twenty twenty three dash O dash seventeen, that's still assigned to the zoning committee. Ordinance number twenty twenty three dash O dash twenty two, second reading, if you please read it by its title.
Ordinance number twenty twenty three dash O dash twenty two, second reading. The ordinance amending codified ordinances ten thirty six point oh four A by creating new section ten thirty six point oh four A four in order to regulate and describe trees that may be planted on tree lawns or within the public right of way.
Like to give uh some of the still ordinance. You were offered it last time and you haven't scheduled it, so yes, if you wish to schedule one, you may take it into your, right? But you schedule it. Okay. This will go on to third reading. It'll be a. Old business. Amendments to the council rules, you should have received a hard copy as well as electronic, some proposed amendments to the council rules. My suggestion is just read them over, we will discuss them at the next meeting. Bridges and telescopes at Parks and Recreation Board, uh Mrs. Thompson still hasn't sent that to her. You sent it today?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll have to review that. New business, spending your report for for approval statewide for sixty three thousand fifty four dollars for a police car with the administration, like speak to this.
This is uh, this is the additional police uh car that uh speaking with chief foresight, uh statewide Ford will not be producing as many cars next year, so the idea was to get in, get us get another twenty twenty three. Uh speaking with the chief yesterday, we should get the first one in about a month, I think, or so. Uh they have everything, you know, nickel, bog on everything, and then the other one should be pretty close to the end of the year. So in reality, we'll get two twenty twenty three models, but with very low mileage at this point, so uh you know, at least we don't have to worry about not getting another one next year. And I know, speaking with the chief, we do need to.
Any questions for the administration on this?
Will they be retiring any cars?
Yes, uh we talked about uh five seventy four and I believe five seventy five. I think we retired, what the idea would be to put them out on uni bid and and see if we could, you know, recover uh some funds.
Yes, Mary, is this particular cruiser uh one that would normally have been squat next year if there hadn't been?
Correct, yes, it would get uh if the production wasn't slow or, you know, as as we know, they're still on strike. And uh, yeah, we would have put it in the budget next year, yeah.
Any other questions? There are motion to approve.
Well, maybe.
Second, made by Mr. Lunder, second by Mrs. Thompson. Roll call please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Is there any other new business tonight? Hearing none, yes.
Um Julie, to be reminded, the I sent out, available to help contracts to dispatch via local stretch companies. And uh the first advertisement will be in New York tomorrow.
Any other new business? Hearing none, we will now open this portion of the ball to speak. Yeah, if you'd like to speak, please come to the lecture and state your name and address for the record.
Will Cleveland still on slide rolling?
You during that time?
Yeah. Just a quick question, and I guess I've kind of addressing this to the mayor or council, I don't really know who. But it was brought up at last night's meeting that uh we have money left in the budget of somewhere approaching a million dollars. And I'm wondering, I realize you can't respond to me at this time, but I I would hope that the somebody could get to the public, understand, is there really a million dollars setting in our account waiting to be used? I fully understand we like some reserve, emergencies or who knows whatever. But we're, we're asking for new tax levies, uh a sixty three thousand dollar police car, and I do support the police, but they reasonably but I wonder, can we ever get access to the city budget? How much money we actually have in the year, some kind of breakdown of where the money goes? And what's gonna happen to the extra million dollars or so that we allegedly have left over? Is it really a million dollars worth this subtax tax fictitious number? I I'm just very curious about the money.[1577.48]